You know, any other information you could gather from from the plans that we had, the most of the local wells are shown on the original CO1 drawing that it provided. Mr. Fessenden also looked at the state of Maine well data, found some other additional wells that are in the area that are you know, close by. And so he made an analysis of how much rainfall falls on here, how much of that rain goes into the ground? And how much would be used here as a new facility? Plus, he didn't know how many homes were in the near, in the watershed, so he assumed 100 four-bedroom homes. I don't think there are 100 four-bedroom homes in neighborhood, but I mean, that's a very conservative assumption. And he included, like, find the way during our year, this, over the course of the and so the water they draw out, at some point, most of it goes back into the ground from their subjects, which is the same as what this BF will be doing here. Most of their water will go back into the river. So I think the, the water supply was a concern that we had and Mr. Fessenden was able to address that. Yeah, and there's a world early letter in there that kind of estimated the production of the well. The next item that I addressed in here was the subsurface disposal system. Over the course of the month, Dave kind of marshaled some meetings with Dylan and several other people, state officials. Actually, Mark Hedrick is here this evening. This is Mark. He was one of the representative from US Department, the Maine Department of Agriculture. And he wrote the approval letter for this subsurface system. So have we seen that?
Yes, it was in there, but last submission and then it's included in this supplemental. Are we talking about the DHHS form or the actual approval?
It's not DHHS, it is agriculture. It's on agriculture letter here. And it was October, I think, last year. If you don't have it, I can add a comment very quickly.
Don't believe it's in the application that was presented at the last meeting.
Yeah, it's part of the, it may be part of the record, but it might not be easy to come. So, so let's make it easy to find.
So we also discussed some of the, the attachment B to the supplemental information talks a lot about the, some rulemaking that Department of Agriculture went through, in particular, Rule 10, or the comments on this new, or comment number 10 on the new regulations. There's several items that are pertinent to particularly to some waterhouses. Well, that's highlighted in your attachment here, in attachment B. So I, I won't read those to you, but it specifically addresses situations just like this.
Yeah, make a comment. I believe that approval that I saw correctly, if I'm wrong, but it, it was based on certain criteria as related to the wastewater content and assumption on the wastewater content. Is that not true? So that's the critical factor that centers around that assumption of the wastewater content. Thank you.
And also this month, Dave had a meeting with Alex Q. Who's the, what's his title, Dave? I'm sorry, Alex Q?
Oh, he's the, he's the hydrogeologist with Health Engineering.
And Mark and Dylan. And I think they, they all discussed the jurisdiction, not the jurisdiction, but the applicability of different standards. And I don't know, Dylan, you can kind of summarize that probably better than I can.
Jurisdiction also. What's that? It was jurisdiction also. It was Health Engineering, but they don't have jurisdiction.
NDP has already said they do not have jurisdiction because it's not wastewater discharge to surface waters. So is that, does that make sense? What, what you were, what you're gonna?
Yeah, all comments in the conversation that we had was that essentially by the end of the conversation, I was told that it would fall into DHHS rules and therefore I wouldn't be involved in the plumbing statement.
And so this kind of makes it difficult because the town only allows state plumbing code rules. Or the, so that's their, their contention at this point. In, in that letter, they talked about the meeting, we also, Dave presented a, some subsurface waste disposal rules. 10-144, code of main rules, chapter 241. It's just the definition section. And the definition of domestic wastewater is just of human origin. Produced by an ordinary house or living uses, including liquid waste containing animal or vegetable matter in suspension or solution. And it goes on. So that's like your, a regular septic system is called domestic waste. Later on in the discussion, it talks about wastewater in their definitions. And it specifically means domestic waste other than wastewater.
I think it was 121, and it says specifically that agricultural wastewater is excluded from the purview of those rules. So if the DHS, HHS says it doesn't have jurisdiction over this, and that the wastewater rules have, wastewater decisions have to go through agriculture. Which is kind of part of our argument, the plumbing code doesn't apply here. We can't make the plumbing code do what DHS, HHS could not do in the first instance.
So this is something probably that we discuss more in, in future meetings. And we get that credit as a team and affirm what the jurisdiction is. We also talked in the supplemental information about some proposed effluent monitoring and testing. That is, it's kind of unusual to test this because generally a subsurface disposal system like this will not have any surface discharge. Even though this type of waste, I believe Department of Agriculture rules would allow it to be just spread on the surface. We're putting it in back into the ground. And the one thing that I think Greg Woods brought up was the potential, Greg Woods with DPP, and he does monitoring of spreading sludge on fields. And when I worked at DPP, they called it snowflow, making snow out of wastewater. They sprayed it on, sprayed wastewater through snowmaking machines. That kills bacteria, freezes. And anyway, they do water testing after that. And I think in his expertise, he said in like 30 years, he's never had a violation for too much nutrients, particularly phosphorus running off a snowflow field or a, a surface applied wastewater system. So that's you know, by them offering to do testing in the ground, have a shallow test well, you get to see what water is in the groundwater. Now, the groundwater is, you know, generally not connected to the surface water runoff, but this gives you, should give you a level of comfort that what's going out of here is not toxic or have any sort of excess nutrient loading that would, would go downstream. That's kind of a difficult summary there. The operating hours is a concern. I think one of the, our audience members asked when they're going to be operating. And generally, it's going to be six to six Monday through Thursday, potentially on Friday too, but mostly Monday through Thursday. And that's when, when the, a lot of the work will take place. However, this is, this is a unique small business. People will be, farmers will be bringing animals to this from great distances away. They may arrive outside of those hours. So, you know, if they arrive at three o'clock in the morning for that, two trucks a year that might do that, we don't want that to be a problem with the neighbors. Because it's, you know, it, it won't be a frequent thing, you don't schedule trucks to arrive at three in the morning. But if a farmer's driving from Vermont to get their animal slaughtered, animals, then it, it's hard to say what time they'll arrive.
If I could add something here, I've worked with another slaughterhouse, and one of the problems any slaughterhouse is going to have is the arrival time of the farmers. And there are two aspects to this that need to be considered. One, and the first, I think probably is important, is the health of the is the health of the animals. What, what we did was, we had actual requirements after the notice given if somebody's going to be late. And then we did have a way to arrange a shady place with water for the truck to be until operations resume, which is making it work. So it's just a matter of, you know, the things you're not going to control. There are going to be farmers who don't tell you they're going to be late. There are, you know, exceptionally hot days, whatever. But in terms of it being a restriction on the business, it is what it is. The workaround, though, is not as easy as you might think, and all we'd ask is some grace and doing our best when that happens. It'll be rare. It'll be rare, particularly if there's a place for them to stop.
The other question or issue that came up was, we talked about having a generator. They're going to have literally thousands of dollars worth of meat and product that they need to store. So they have to have a generator in case the power goes out. You know, if they were to lose power for an extended period of time, they'd lose several weeks' work potentially. So there will be a generator mounted right on the front of the house, or in front of the office and butchery here. This will be the concept I've, I've seen is that we mounted near the building, it has to be a certain distance away just for by code and stuff. But there'll be walls on both sides of it so that it will block a lot of the noise for the neighbors. The building itself will block the noise from the neighbors out to the east of them. So it's, you know, if the power goes out, you always know you can go charge your phone up to butchery. So that is now shown on here in the front of the building right here. One of the other changes we made, I don't think it's in this section here, is the size of the building. We had said 4,800 square feet. And then, once I started doing the stormwater and also talking with Husein, we wanted to have a roof over where the animals will be stored. For two reasons. One, to keep, you know, give them a little bit of shade and you know, keep them, keep them somewhat comfortable before they go in to be processed. But also having a roof right here will allow the water to shed off the, the building roof and then shed off this roof here and into the ditch. If you remember, there's a ditch running along the side of the property here, coming to a small detention pond here. That's water, stormwater runoff that we want to keep as clean as we can. And if the water were to run off the building and run down through the animal yard, at that point, it might pick up feces and other materials that we don't want spreading on the lawn and going down to the lake. So by putting a roof over this area here, that keeps the stormwater clean essentially. The animal waste and everything that's collected within this holding area, we discussed about it at the last meeting, that this would all be cleaned up and taken off-site for disposal. This is, will be shuffled up, cleaned up. As a separate process. I think that's, those are the, the yeah, and we did get the stormwater review comments back. We had, we sent the stormwater analysis that I had prepared out to a, an engineer down in Camden. And now I supplied all the information he needed. And last Friday, he was able to send us that. He had only a minor comment that when, when we have this pond up front here, we have like a four-inch culvert rains that pond. So water goes in there and gets detained briefly. It'll all, but then ultimately between storms, that'll all drain dry. Where it comes through this culvert, as it goes back out onto a lawn, it may need some, a little riprap apron or riprap area to kind of diffuse that before it goes back onto the lawn. And I, I hardly accept his, his recommendation. I think that's, you know, that's a good suggestion. I was thinking the water would be going slow enough, but if you get a good belly washer, it might be coming out of that pipe slow or not so slow. And the riprap will punch pool area, but allow it to slow down and diffuse out into grass more slowly. So that was, I think, Mr. Lane, the review engineer, had suggested that that could be a condition. I would accept that condition.
Just to explain, Bob was just asking me a question about the discharge and disinfectants. And if I understood correctly at the last meeting, you discussed that that would all be biodegradable.
And the This is stormwater. This is
The cleaning underneath the area
Yeah, cleaning underneath
Might run through.
Yeah, we, yeah. What I want to avoid as far as the water, our water
Understood that they're different. Yeah, just catching up from last meeting.
Yeah. No, we just want to make sure that it's pretty clean, cover off the roof. I want to keep it
Understood.
Any other questions about this? These are the, the changes to the applications. Last.
You mentioned testing. Do you have any further information about what might be tested at this point?
We're proposing just a test as our phosphorus and
BOD.
BOD, it's a standard, yeah, it's a standard test. So we, we talked with labs and they, they, like, these labs down in Windfall will supply you a kit to collect the sample with. That has, and then you take it into there for analysis. And that's something that we proposed to do for a couple of years maybe, and will supply the results to the town, to probably to Dylan. And then, if we don't have any problems in a couple of years, we'll probably come back and say, can we drop the test?
Can you address why there's a delay in the testing on when it will start?
The phase up.
And phase up and then phase out?
The, well, we can't, can't start it until they're in production.
Right.
And so it's, it would be, you know, it's going to take a while to come out, be delivering. And so that's why we're proposing to test, I think, a couple of times a year for a couple of years. So, you know, that'll, over that time period, I think we, we're testing once in the spring and once in the fall. Those are going to be two different biological conditions in a subsurface system. So that
The intent would be to sample basically after the last tank. On stock of American concrete, the best way is to set that up. If it be at the last tank or at the dusha, dusha manhole where it enters the system, either one of those, which is most easily accessible. Tested before it actually goes over the disposal field. And then we tested at the shallow well down, down slope. So basically the hole we put it down of, basically PVC, the zone, we deal the sample that way. Usually go high and low ground water, just to get the disperses. You get, if you had concern about dilution or something like that, you try to do a
Okay.
I, I think what I understood from the last meeting too, and as well for the qualifying information for the approval that you referenced earlier, that the BOD, the biochemical oxygen demand as well as the total suspended solids, the TSS, those were critical path factors, if you will, in terms of the quantity. And it would be a bad thing to find total suspended solids from a washing that were in a higher quantity than you would expect. And so you're also testing for the TSS. Okay.
And that's one of, that's one of the reasons why, I mean, just a quick, just a quick, instead of going the land application way, the whole purpose of doing this system was because, you know, we're in town. If you were out on the back 40, the chickens are different types of these, and it'd be a little slant of one. They have a tank truck for sprinkler. You know, we, we look at the soils first, make sure the property drained, map the area where the spreading would take place, and they land upon it. Given that this is in town, so to speak, with neighbors and whatever, the intent was to try to keep this thing as isolated and, you know, basically into a quasi-septic system, if you will. So it goes through tanks and series, goes through a filter, and all those things will address a lot of the, again, there should be much particular in the list. But by going through the tanks and series, took apartments, septic tanks, you know, there really should be very little, any kind of suspended solids. It's a very fine filter. The filter that goes through is 1/64 of an inch.
Remember you said that, yeah.
Very small. Okay, and it's industrial type of filter. Then it goes up, it goes into a disposal system, then the wastewater goes into the ground. So I mean, we're going through tanks, then you're going, then you're going into the ground, and the soil will treat the effluent. And that, you know, that's, that's the intent. So, you know, there is no land application. The idea was to try to keep this thing as much of a closed system as we possibly could, given the, given the location. So that was the reason why we went with that design, just as a general statement.
Was that also to mitigate any concerns as related to the nearby water body that, and its contamination under storm conditions?
Were my concerns there?
No, was that design also taking into consideration making sure that we, there were no issues downstream to the lake?
Well, yeah, the idea was just, right, given, okay, certainly with unity bomb, but I don't have any concern as well. What if you know what? Most, most research has spun for many, many years is after effluent passes through about 50 feet of soil. That's why we have septic system. That's why, you know, we do what we do. So that was always, yeah, we tried to make it as much treatment as we possibly do and, and keep it a closed system. So just given where we're located, so there would be no good sense. But just so, you saw Greg Woods, the information in here. Forty sites where they actually, they just land apply. So these are lagoons, they pump it out, make small, or spread it on a field or whatever. That's general wastewater, remove, knows, missful wastewater. All kinds of goods compared, compared to this.
PFAS, if I recall.
Forty sites over 30 years, no contamination, not one. And that's stated in Greg Woods' letter from the EPP. So that gives you an idea really of what the risk concern really is. We're talking about wastewater that's much, much lower strength.
Don't those lagoons need to meet certain secondary standards, 30, you know, 30% BOD?
Yeah, I go to finish lagoons. Yeah, they're taking water out. The licensed operator for the town of Howland wastewater system, and they have lagoons. And their standard is they have to remove 85% of the BOD and solids. And we've been doing that for, they have a big lagoon system there that treats both Howland and in-town and field. And their BOD going out, I've never seen higher than 10 milligrams per liter. The standard is 30 milligrams per liter for monthly average. Lagoons are, are a great treatment system. Now, in a certain situation, but they, they're quite effective because they have such a long detention time that any sort of degradable material has an opportunity to, to oxidize, to degrade. And so the remaining biochemical oxygen demand is, is all used up in those lagoons. That's all I have.
That would be time for Kerry's statement. My last step. Other than the town comments as well. Kerry, have a public man.
All right. So I'm going to do this thing enough because it's habitual at this point. So there's a lot of stigma for hot doors butchery, and it involves balancing various environmental concerns. We we're the need and compelling need to support agriculture. We don't have
So exciting, how do you speak up this a little? It's hard.
We don't have a resilient, local, sustainable food supply in Maine. In fact, we don't have one in New England. Where the goal is to get us to 30% sustainability when it comes to animal protein that isn't fish or eggs. It's more like 1% what we've got. This facility addresses one of the major auto-lax in protein support, which is processing. So you can grow the animals, but if there is no place to prepare them, you can't get them to the table. And it's for this reason that the state using some federal funds, has granted over $2 million to this company to develop a protein processing plant. They have gone through a competitive grant process after, it was 2002, I think, after, after COVID, as far as they are as opposed to the ARPA funding, that the state channels into $19 million worth of AIP funding, which was specifically directed towards developing infrastructure in, for agriculture in Maine. There were 850 applicants and only a handful got them, and only the most promising projects got those funds. They got $250,000. They subsequently received one and a half million dollars from USDA as part of its potential grant, I believe, because getting protein into schools was so important. Then, last year, they got an additional $2.68 million, so way off on the calculation as well for to further develop the program. And they actually got the funding from New Hampshire as part of the regional distribution to develop the protein supply. And recently, they were awarded approximately $100,000 to put a solar installation on the site. So there is a very strong public policy towards developing protein processing in Maine, and the state and the federal government have put their dollars behind it. And in particular, they have put it behind this project. I can say neutrally that it is highly unlikely that such level of funding will be available in the near future. So having said that, it's gone through multiple reviews by multiple regulatory agencies. It's received, received substantial awards because of its promise. It's received, received substantial awards because of its promise. And there is no similar project at this, at this stage of development here in Maine. We know the both Maine and the town are committed to agriculture. You can see this as a way the statutory scheme has been set up. Which best approval authority almost entirely in the agriculture department to steer farms clear. Of other, other considerations and to make sure that those environmental concerns. Applicable to agriculture are properly vetted and addressed. Your ordinances have an entire section dedicated to farm land protection. And your development, your entire development review process is extremely sensitive to farm, farm land protection and farm use. So I've never been to Unity except for the Common Ground Fair. You're a very well-known agriculture community here in Maine. And I'd encourage you to sit back and look at all of the considerations as you make your findings a fact. Perhaps if you understand the policy context. As you look at the evidence that's in front of you. It will cause you to consider what the factual findings should be. Divide up an entire, I'd be interested of an entire team.
Did I hear you reference the solar on the project? Because we haven't entertained anything related to our solar.
I don't know what it is. That's beyond my scope. I just happen to know they have a month.
No, we, we haven't talked about solar on the site at all. That's something that. Now that we have more time, apparently, that's something that we can can address. What, do you have a solar ordinance? I need to look at that a little more closely.
No, not for this. They're talking about putting solar on top of them.
It depends on the context of the solar.
But it's for onsite use. It's not to feed back to the grid. Is that the idea?
That's my understanding.
We're, we're not producing enough solar to sell anything. It will cover half of our, our.
Well, yeah, certainly anything that's planned as part of this overall site, including solar should be shown on this plan.
Well, the grant was, I think.
Well, it's on our website. I think if people can just navigate our website, they can see the pictures of the project.
Yeah, we need it on the plan, though, if it's a site element.
I think John, you had a previously said that this wasn't going to be an issue, right, the solar?
It's not, but it should be on the plans. But it's, it's not. This is not a solar array like we have up on, on the Albion Road, okay? Our solar, solar ordinance is only for projects of a certain size and what you're doing is not, is not going to affect. You know, we don't even issue permits.
You said it's roof mounted?
Yeah, it's all roof mounted. So I, I wasn't sure if they were going to do a, a field mounted. That may be a different standard, but if it's all roof mounted, that's generally under the building code.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I was assuming it was big enough that it had to be in the field.
Yeah, no, I believe it's all roof mounted.
Since we didn't know, I just wanted to. And I did hear everything else you did say.
So at this point. Do we want to go through? The subdivision application or we want to wait on that?
No, it makes sense to go through. Everybody's okay with that? I think it might help separate the issues out a little bit. What do you do for a three lot subdivision? What do you do for findings and a decision?
No, it's a type one, it's a type one.
So is there approval or?
Yeah, it's the same thing. It's the same thing, but that.
So I think I'll just let you do your thing on that, if you have anything else. And I won't bother doing.
It does.
Shut up to you. I just don't want to reinvolve.
Yes, I have an initial question. Emily, you made a great suggestion at one point as we looked at the lots. And you had asked that certain documents be attached and included in that submittal that were in the other's middle. I don't remember specifically what that was, but it's occurred to me that we might just make sure we're in good stead on that. It, it would, I think it had something to do with the recorded documents.
Oh, it was the easements. The existing deeds.
And I just want to make sure we got that, yeah.
Yeah, the latest one had all the deeds, the Piper, the ones to Piper from Knob, yeah. Just so those restrictions need to be seen.
Yeah. I believe that that is all included in my subdivision application.
What I'm suggesting is that we did already go through for the preliminary stage all of the standards for this one. So one shortcut would be if you feel like nothing has changed from those preliminary findings. That you sort of import those findings into the final approval.
I was exactly in track with what you're saying, and that's why I wanted to make sure that we'd gotten that one thing that we had cited at that meeting. And other than that, I'm in good stead on it.
I do have a question for this call. I wasn't present at that meeting and I guess I would seek your advice as to whether I should stand for the vote.
You aren't present at that meeting either, where you have a.
Do you have a quorum?
Yeah, he was. He missed his fourth meeting.
So you have a.
Was that the meeting on two dash point six? Yes, Bob was not present.
Oh, he was.
John, Linda, myself, Emily, Jim, who is no longer on board, Mary, who no longer, and Mark, who has recused himself.
Sorry, is Mark recused from subdivision? Yes.
I would be recused from the subdivision as well.
I think so. If you're in a better. Of the business, you're in a better of the subdivision. I get it, but.
We have. One, two, three, four.
Do you have an alternate right now?
No. We don't have any.
So you do have a form already?
That's assuming that I'm staying.
Yes. So I'd suggest that.
Basically, we'd be going down through the standards for approval for the subdivision at this point.
Yeah, no, you, you would, but I, I, what I'm suggesting is that maybe you don't even need to go down them one by one. You already have in the record findings that you made on the first. Then you could have a motion that, you know, no, no issues during the findings have changed since the preliminary stage and. The board repeats and. Remakes the findings that were made at the preliminary stage.
Providing that the documents, the supporting documents are unrelated to the subdivision.
Yes, okay.
Okay, did you have something else?
Yeah, I'm not trying to make more work for us, but when we went through items before, we determined that they existed. That they were submitted. We found the application complete. We didn't find it conforming.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Yeah, we never said that what was submitted for us to consider showed that. Things are conforming with the ordinance. We just simply said, yeah, they're there.
Oh, yeah, let's go through them.
We kind of have to at some point.
Yeah. I was forgetting what the scope was.
So where does that leave us? Are we going back through the existing conditions? Material, are we going to standard standards for approval over? Because we actually, the. Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking. Because this is a revised March twentieth, and that took into consideration changes. That we made in February. We asked you to make changes to this application. You made those changes. Those changes done, so we'll go through the standards of approval. The question I had for you is. You are anxious to get this done because DOT requires this before they actually. Give you a permit to put in a driveway?
What I was told is because. Her ordinances, it's considered a subdivision. You guys have to give the approval on it and state that it's not really a subdivision. It's just. Okay. By technicality, not by function.
There, there's no difference.
Well, do you understand what I'm trying to say? Maybe I'm not using the right legal.
No, I love language.
It's not a ten lot residential subdivision. It's a subdivision just because it's the timings of the lots we divide.
To us, it's an ordinance related to a subdivision.
Yes.
And we go by that ordinance.
Okay, but it's not being used to build lots of businesses or lots of homes, and that's what the DOT is looking for. That it's, that it's a land division and nothing more than that. And that's why it's a subdivision.
Well, what we do do is we require that. We have an access, access to property.
We go exactly by ordinance. That's, I'm saying the same thing.
I mean, I think you can say what they're looking for, I guess, is something in the findings and decision that says. It's an approval of a three lot development. No residential development is proposed. It's for the, you know. Has already occurred and is for the purpose of this commercial development. We can say that. That sounds like we're forgetting that. However, DOT is aware that this is to serve a business. They are fully aware of what the purpose is, yeah.
Alright. So we can go down through the standards for approval that was submitted by the applicant. And. I do have a form, if I can find it there, I think. We're looking at, does it meet or does it not meet, or is it non-applicable in each instance? That's what we're looking for. And starting. Does everybody have? Standards for approval in front of them, or can they, we, I'm going to read these off anyways. But under each of these, there is information concerning each one of these, and are we meeting those guidelines? So let's go down through these. And if we have any questions at all, we may need to go back into the ordinance and look at, you know, clarify some things. Other than that. So first standard is A. Preservation of land. The land in the subdivision will continue to be used for residential or agricultural purposes. No zoning changes are being requested for the subdivision. And remember, this is on the subdivision itself. It has nothing to do at this point with. With the. The butchery.
Do you want a motion on each letter?
Yes.
I move to find a preservation of land conforming.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Yeah, I think it's important we do each one. B, open space. The division of land will not unreasonably impact open space due to the large lot size.
I move to find it conforming.
Okay.
Where the board's not saying anything different, you're just sort of adopting the applicant's. Statement of fact.
All in favor? Access to the site. All lots will continue to have access to public roads without building a subdivision road.
It was where the road, then the road. So. DOT has your site plan.
We're not building the road, we're building a driver.
Exactly. So I mean. The ordinance doesn't want us to ever approve. The division of land or approve a new lot without assuring that there is access. And even though it's a butt's a road, DOT gets to tell you whether or not you can put an access in from the road to the lot. We all know these things. So it's, it's states, DOT's jurisdiction there. So for us to approve the lot, we need them to say, yes, you have access. We know that they are saying you have access as long as not. Not a subdivision in their. Fantasy of what that means, you know, a separate road and so many additional cars coming in on that point. Or whatever their concerns are around the work subdivision in their mind. It sounds like they ought to be able to give the permit based on the site plan. I haven't, you haven't said that they have specifically said that they won't. You haven't said that it, you think it would help them.
They did give us a permit, but the, one of the conditions in the permit that they provided was that it cannot be part of a subdivision.
So you need that change. Yeah, and I think you indicated earlier something wrong, that you feel like it will help them move on their process if they see that the town is super good with this.
Yeah, with the subdivision, then they. I think that would give them, because right now it's part of an illegal subdivision.
Right, sure is.
And so we need to pass this to then make it a legal subdivision. So that DOT can say they're not breaking a law by issuing access to an illegal lot.
Okay, I find that very compelling. I would be. Now that you say that, more inclined to, and I. Trying not to give conditional approval ever, ever again. But here we go. You know, what are we supposed to do? Just rockin' a hard place. DOT is saying, no, you go first, and we're saying, no, you go first.
Can we say it's to a lot that will not require access, something?
All lots require access. No, no, but will.
Well, what, what, Mr. Karmic, did you read the language again? Because it said it does. It does have access to a public road. It doesn't mean that you're having a driveway. Right?
Well, access to the site and access into the site are two different things. Access to the site is all lots will continue to have access to public roads without building a subdivision road. So it specifies that you're saying it's not a subdivision per se. You're not going to build ten houses.
Right.
In this, in this field.
And this law does have legal frontage on a road that in some. Realm of DOT generosity, they could give us a permit.
And to jump ahead, D is access into the site. Driveway entrances exist for two of the, of the lots and will be permitted by main D U P. D, main department of transportation for the third, the third being the butchery.
Yes.
And what, but in your conversation with DOT, why don't they see this? Why don't they understand this?
It's difficult sometimes dealing with, with state agencies. I'll leave it at that.
You don't say.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the key things is subdivision road versus driveway.
I, I agree with you.
We're not talking about a road, which, yeah, all the time the road implies access to.
Multiple.
Multiple. Multiple businesses, what have you. Talking about a driveway which goes to one facility.
Talking about a conventional subdivision.
Driveway versus road.
At this point, how do you want to deal with folks? It does meet standards, it doesn't meet standards, it's not applicable. In this particular situation, we got to remember that. The butchery project came first, this came second. And if it had been done properly, this would not even be an issue at this point. Because it was, the, the subdivision actually occurred in two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah. Would like to trust that the DOT will remove that one little condition, just.
Yeah, me too. But it's still there.
Well, right now, their, the permit that they issued said it cannot go to a subdivision. Because when we, they originally applied for the driveway. They didn't, they weren't aware that it was a, an illegal subdivision.
Correct.
So they weren't hurting anything by putting that in there? They were just kind of for the future, like, by the way, don't get any ideas.
But a driveway, I mean, it is an entrance permit. It's not a, not a road permit. So I mean, that, that's the. So I mean, that, that's the important distinction, so it seems reasonable to expect DOT to issue a permit for a lot in a legal subdivision. It's probably not reasonable for them to issue a permit for a lot in an illegal subdivision.
Right, okay. So I'm going to move to find this conforming. Because as has been pointed out, the permit process, which was an approved permit for what they thought was the lot that we all think it is actually going to be. They have found that the sightlines are acceptable and all of that jazz. I think that's what the process needs, but I also find it reasonable. We do know that DOT has already come out and said everything's good to go here for a entrance to
The butchery.
One location.
Yeah.
That's what they wanted.
Yeah.
So we do have evidence that there is access to the site.
I would, I think all the finding needs to say is DOT has issued an entrance permit for access to the site from the road. Conditioned on the development not being used as a residential subdivision, period. The development will not be used as a residential subdivision.
I like that.
And then that circles back to DOT and they have said.
So I move to find C. And B, or C, we're on C, move to find C conforming.
But let's, can we get right into the decision, what I just said there as part of that motion?
Yes, yes.
Just move, just move the motion, right?
I did. Well, yeah, I made it and I accepted the friendly amendment.
I don't think there's been a second. So that's, that's the motion.
Nobody will second it?
Anybody going to make a second? All in favor? We move to D. Access into site, or was this for both C and D?
I did C.
D, access to the site, driveway entrances exist for two of the lots and will be permitted by main department of transportation for the third.
I would copy and paste my prior language. So I move.
All in favor? Oh, second, well, excuse me. E. Internal vehicular circulation. Internal circulation is anticipated to remain as it is now in the subdivision unless a new development is approved by the planning board.
I move to find that conforming.
Second? All in favor? Pedestrian circulation, not applicable. Erosion and sediment control, no soil disturbance is being proposed as part of the subdivision, not applicable. That is the case with this because it's just, it's just own permit. Application. H, construction site conditions, no construction is proposed as part of the subdivision, non-applicable. N A. Surface water drainage, no changes to surface water drainage is proposed as part of the subdivision, N A again. Groundwater protection, no changes to groundwater is proposed as part of the subdivision, N A again.
It's okay, it's by consensus.
Fire protection, no structures are proposed as part of the subdivision, N A. Drinking water supply, noted water demand is proposed as part of the subdivision, again, not applicable, N A. Sewer disposal, no new sewage disposal is being proposed as part of the subdivision, not applicable. Exterior lighting.
We're drawing lines on that.
I'm thinking we're putting in a sewage disposal system that.
That's not part of this. It's part of the butchery project.
Okay.
Exterior lighting, no new exterior lighting is being proposed as part of the subdivision, N A. No owner issues will be created by the subdivision, N A. Noise, no noise issues will be created by the subdivision, N A. Landscaping, no landscaping is proposed as part of the subdivision, N A. That's Q, by the way, I probably shouldn't have said any of these things. R, relation of proposed development to existing setting. Following division of the land as proposed, the lots will be similarly sized in lots, to lots in the area. Lots will continue to have access to public roads without building subdivision roads.
Move to find that conforming.
Second? All in favor? S, financial and technical capacity, this subdivision has already been accomplished, so there is no additional financial cost to the applicant. One division of land was to a blood relative of the adjacent lot owner, but that was accomplished with a minimally priced annual lease that can be waived by the lessor.
Move to find that conforming.
Second? Well, second, all in favor? T. Comprehensive plan. Goal one of the town's comprehensive plan includes to retain our small town character, historic downtown and identify as a farming community.
Move to find conforming.
You want me to go through the objectives?
No, I find that conforming.
Got a second? All in favor? U is additional standards for commercial telecommunications towers, N A. That's it.
That's all of the ones under the ordinance, so here's a question. There are the subdivision standards under the statute, do you, do you usually find that those are sort of subsumed into the standards you just reviewed or do you go through them separately?
The standards are different.
They are.
They are different.
I think, I think we should at least take the cruise through the
I agree.
State law standards and we'll probably just be referring back to Austin's findings. You don't have forms for that, do you?
No, I don't. I think there's probably only about three or four things, maybe five things are different.
Okay, so I'll read them off. All right. So I'll read the standards since I got back my notes. So number one is the proposed subdivision will not result in undue water or air pollution. In making this determination, it shall at least consider, I'm not going to read the rest since there's sufficient water, the proposed subdivision has sufficient water available. Proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on an existing water supply. Proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of the highways, we can refer back to our findings on C and D. Sewer disposal, we can refer back to our finding on that standard. Municipal solid waste disposal, the proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on solid waste disposal, also not particularly applicable. Aesthetic, cultural and natural values, the proposed subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect on scenic or natural beauty of the area. Aesthetics, historical sites, significant wildlife habitat identified by D I F and W or the municipality or rare and irreplaceable natural areas or any public rights for physical or visual access to the shoreline.
Our complaints outside there.
I think it's a combination of there are no physical changes being made to the site publicly.
You know, also in the butchery project that has been handled through that application also.
Yeah, the land division doesn't have an impact on those issues.
Just doesn't implicate those issues because there's no physical development.
No.
Conformity with local ordinances and plans. Proposed subdivision conforms with the duly adopted subdivision regulation or ordinance, which refers back to this state law. Comprehensive plan, which is already just bound, development plan or land use plan, if any. Move to find that conforming. I've already made a finding on item number ten, which is financial and technical capacity. Number eleven is whenever situated entirely or partially within the watershed of any pond or lake or within two hundred fifty feet of a wetland, great pond or river, the proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality of that body of water. Does the board find that the division is located within the watershed of any pond or lake or within two hundred fifty feet of any wetland?
It's in the watershed, right?
It's in the watershed.
This is a division of land.
Yeah.
We created two lots out of one.
So while it is within a watershed, there's, because there's no physical development. Doesn't implicate that standard. Number twelve, proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater, again, no physical development. Flood area, not within any flood plain, correct?
Correct.
Freshwater wetlands within the proposed subdivision have been identified on any maps submitted as part of the application. Are there freshwater wetlands identified on the on plan?
No, there were no wetlands found over here.
There are no wetlands on the site to confine. Many river stream or both within or abutting proposed subdivision has been identified on any maps submitted. Any river, stream or brick within the site.
There's some drainage rays, but they are not identified streams.
No trees on the site. Proposed subdivision will provide for adequate stormwater management, no physical developments, so not applicable. Spaghetti lots are prohibited. The one, find there to be spaghetti lots on the plan. Lake phosphorus concentration, the long-term cumulative effects of the subdivision will not unreasonably increase the great ponds phosphorus concentration, again, no physical development. There's no impact on the adjoining municipality here, that's the next standard. And there is no liquidation harvesting being done. I will say all of that for the record, almost all of it was inapplicable. Couple of things we had already made findings on that were applicable. So with those two things having been reviewed, I think in order for motion to approve the subdivision act of fact.
I'm going to approve the subdivision.
All in favor?
So a notice of decision will go out on that.
Thank you.
Is there? I guess, I guess because we have that one condition in there that should be already seen in the written decision. The condition about the DOT entrance permit not being for residential subdivision, just want to make sure that's in there and not to see any sort of even if that was a.
If you could send me a copy of that decision, I can then forward that to DOT.
Yeah, so the motion to continue until the to continue the public hearing, we have to keep doing until the May twenty eighth meeting. Set motion.
All in favor? We can adjourn this meeting. Seven point.